Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 8, 2024, Meeting of the Escondido Planning Commission. If you could please rise and join me in saluting the flag.
... United States of America, continue your public rule of existence. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice as one.
Quick, get the roll call, please.
Chair Wiley.
Chair.
Vice Chair Barber.
Chair.
Commissioner McCarron.
Here.
Commissioner Peter.
Here.
Commissioner Jester.
Here.
Commissioner Stevie.
Here.
And Commissioner Correll.
Absent.
Moving on to the prior minutes, any questions or changes to the minutes? We have a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Barber. Do we have a second?
Second.
To approve. Second by Commissioner Jester.
Voting.
Do we get the roll call?
Voting has been opened. We got it fixed from last time. And the vote is five zero to approve with one abstain.
Got it, thank you. Do we have any written communications on anything not on tonight's agenda?
None of this time, no.
Any oral communications from anybody who wish to speak?
None provided at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to the public hearings. First public hearing is for PL 240057. It's the Mission and CCP Drive-Thru Facilities. Do we have any disclosures?
I have a disclosure. I previously worked on this project, so I will have to recuse myself, and Vice Chair Barber will take over in my stead.
Agenda item one, could we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Vice Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. Ivan Flores, Senior Planner with the Planning Division, and I will be presenting on item On September 19th, city staff received a request from the applicant to continue this item due to some outstanding issues and concerns related to 20 conditions of approval. Most of these issues were around the timing of issuance of permits. The resolution before the Planning Commission tonight reflects the revised conditions as agreed to by the applicant. The project site is located at the intersection of Center City Parkway and Mission Avenue. It is primarily comprised of commercial developments in this area of Center City Parkway with industrial developments west of Mission Avenue. The site is currently occupied with a Quality Inn Hotel and Restaurant Building located at the northeast corner, which will be demolished as a part of this request. The parcel is comprised of approximately 3.4 acres in size. The parcel is located in the Commercial General Plan Land Use Designation and the Commercial General Zoning District. The intent of this land use designation is to support a wide variety of commercial uses, including auto-oriented drive-through uses such as the one before the Planning Commission tonight, as long as it's subject to a conditional use permit. There are several items before the Planning Commission tonight, and those consist of a tentative parcel map, a non-emergency demolition permit, a major conditional use permit, and a design review permit. Typically, these items, specifically the tentative parcel, specifically the major conditional use permit, would be heard by the Planning Commission. However, because there's a non-emergency demolition permit that is issued by the city council, the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation on all entitlements before the commission tonight. The non-emergency demolition permits to demolish the building that's approximately around over 50 years old. The major conditional use permit is for the proposed drive-through uses. In addition to a reduction in off-street parking for parcel four, the tentative parcel map should subdivide the existing two parcels into four parcels to facilitate the development of the drive-through facilities, and the design review permit is to regulate the exterior appearance of these buildings as required by Article 64. Here is the layout of the proposed tentative parcel map. Parcel one will contain the Quality Inn Hotel and retain about 2.9 acres in size. Parcel two will be about .50 acres. Parcel three will be .46, and parcel four will be about .52 acres. All these lots meet the minimum size requirements as required by the Commercial General Zoning District, and access between the sites, whether it's vehicular or pedestrian, will be maintained through the joint use agreement that is part of the engineering's conditions of approval. Currently, the project site is accessed via driveway on West Mission Avenue. The project includes a new driveway on Center City Parkway, in addition to a left turnpocket signal on the northbound lane for Center City Parkway. Parcel two will contain about 20 spaces. Parcel three will contain 20 spaces, and parcel four will contain 11 required off-street parking spaces, with the nine other spaces being compact spaces. This is as a part of the conditional use permit process. The applicant is able to request a reduction in off-street parking spaces. So the 11 is what's being required as a part of this conditional use permit. However, as a design feature, they are proposing nine compact spaces to meet the intent of the 20 off-street parking spaces that are required for these uses. All the buildings are approximately situated 17 feet away from Center City Parkway. The queuing lanes have been designed to minimize any impacts to off-street parking on the parcels themselves and to promote conducive circulation. Parcel two, which is the Starbucks, will contain enough space for 22 vehicles in the drive-through lane. Parcel three will contain enough space for 11 vehicles, and parcel four will contain enough space for 19 vehicles. Here's the conceptual landscape plan that the applicant submitted. A total of 50 trees are proposed throughout the development, with a total of 20 street trees, when 17 are required. The trees consist of shu string acacia, mountain strawberry trees, eastern redwoods, and several mature trees that are palm trees will be retained on site. And so here is the landscaping for the Starbucks. Here's the landscaping for the Chipotle, which is adjacent to the Starbucks. And across the driveway out is the proposed building that does not have a tenant at this The heights for the buildings range from 19 feet to 21 feet. 21 feet, they include parapets to screen several of the HVAC units on site. There's a mix of material consisting of white stucco and composite vertical siding, such as island mist and tiki torch. The tiki torch is the wood-like material, while the island mist is the gray-like material on the Chipotle. For the Starbucks, the north-facing elevation is what you will see from West Mission Avenue. For the Chipotle, the east elevation is what you'll see from Center City Parkway, and for the unnamed tenant, it will be also the east elevation that you'll see from Center City The project also includes a non-emergency demolition request for a building over 50 years of age. Just for some background, the project was taken to the Historic Preservation Commission on May 18, 2023, where the HPC voted to recommend to city council the demolition of the building. However, due to a site redesign and the dissolution of the HPC, now this item will be heard by the planning commission, who will make a recommendation of the city council. The structure was constructed in 1962 in the Googie architectural style. Over the last 50 years, modifications and alterations have been made to the original building. However, a historic resource assessment did find that the building is eligible to be listed on the city's Register of Historic Resources under criteria two and criteria five, and consequently eligible to be listed on the California Register of Historic Resources under criteria three. Criteria two under the city's local register is any structure that embodies distinguishing characteristics of an architectural design, and criteria five relates to the age of the building, as long as it's over 50 years of age and meets that criteria. And as it relates to the California Register of Historic Resources, it meets criteria three, which essentially states that the structure embodies distinctive characteristics of this type of architectural style. Pursuant to CEQA, an initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for public review from July 24 to August 26. The city received one comment from Caltrans regarding the local mobility analysis and just general data. However, that response did not result in any changes to the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. Several mitigation measures are incorporated to address impacts to biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources. A mitigation monitoring and reporting program was prepared and is attached to the resolution as an exhibit. As of the publication of this staff report, staff has not received any public comment. And based on the analysis contained in the staff report, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution Number 2024-7, recommending that the city council approve the project and adopt the environmental document prepared for the project. That will conclude staff's presentation, and the applicant is present tonight, and they will also be presenting on this project themselves.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff?
I have several questions regarding the contemplated signal and then also traffic circulation. So my understanding is you're contemplating putting a signal on Center City, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So based on my rough measurements, that signal will be approximately 400 feet south of the intersection of Center City and Mission, is that correct?
I'll have to defer to our city engineer.
Yeah, I recall it being roughly that distance.
Okay. So does the city have guidelines regarding the spacing of lights on higher-speed roads, of which Center City is one, by which I mean a road where it is a thoroughfare, traffic typically travels at a speed of greater than 45 miles an hour?
The speed limit has been recently reduced to 45 miles an hour there, and this signal will actually operate in tandem with the Mission Avenue signal, so it won't operate individually. It will operate with, I believe it's the left turn phase of the Mission CCP signal. So it's kind of acting as one signal now, or would.
So how does that work? Do you mind if I just redirect? All right, make this easy. So how does that work precisely? Because the Federal Highway Administration has guidelines around this as well, and their guidelines are no less than 1,000 feet of distance between signals. As, and I'll just state my concern plainly for the city, Center City is one of the final remaining thoroughfares between North Escondido, by which I mean Escondido north of El Norte Parkway, where I happen to live, and frankly, the rest of Commerce and Escondido, right? If we want to go shopping at Trader Joe's, if we want to go to many of the restaurants, if we want to go to Grand Avenue, Center City all day long. And so my concern is that we are putting signals very proximate to one another and creating a traffic congestion issue in an area where there's already a lot of activity with the on-ramp, off-ramp, on-ramp from 78, which gets hairy. I mean, try making a left when you're, you know, merging off of 78 and make a left onto Mission. That's already very hard, especially during the middle of the day. And then on top of that, right, you've got all the other traffic that tends to flow there if there's ever any kind of slowdown on the 78, which is frequent, right? I could just start iterating all of the examples of how that specific section is challenging. So can the city describe how that is envisioned working with not one, not two, but three drive-through concepts?
Well, the drive-through concepts are internal. So you basically just have this one new entrance, left turnpocket entrance into the project. Like I said, it's not operating as a separate signal. It operates, it doesn't even add a separate phase to the signal. It correlates with the existing phases of the signal at CCP and Mission. It was analyzed by their traffic engineer and, you know, and found to not degrade the level of service of Center City Parkway.
So if I'm understanding how this works, someone turning from Mission Avenue left onto CCP would then run into a red light on the signal contemplated being added?
Yeah, I don't have the details of how the phasing was going to work with me. I just know that it was looked at and found, you know, there was a solution found where, you know, it operated within the phases of the main signal at CCP and Mission.
Is there a reason we requested that this applicant place a signal there?
Yeah, for safety.
Concerns about too many people turning left into oncoming traffic?
Yeah, ultimately CCP will have three lanes of traffic through traffic, so, at 45 miles an hour. So that was our request, that this be signalized if a left be allowed here, which it was.
Okay. The ingress and egress of traffic in and out of this contemplated three parcel CUP, is it the case that the primary ingress and egress is off of Center City Parkway?
Yeah, combination of that free right into the, you know, into the site and that left. I would say that will be the higher used, but there were also trips coming in from Mission Avenue primarily. They would be eastbound only.
So anyone who wants to go grab a Chipotle and then head north has to exit on Mission and cross over that pretty active right turn lane onto CCP?
Yeah, I mean, at certain times of the day, you'll be able to do that. I would say most times of the day, you will come out and go right on CCP and U-turn at Washington, and I think it was probably analyzed that way.
Okay. So with respect to the circulation internally, it looks like, it looks like the flow of traffic primarily on the highest throughput drive-throughs primarily dumps into that narrow kind of lane there, which is also being utilized for all of the off-street parking. Is that correct? Am I missing anything here?
The off-street parking that I see there is actually on parcel one, which serves the motel. Each of the three drive-through pads have their own onsite parking, not to say that, you know, that that parking could be shared that's along the aisleway.
Okay. So it's a combination of that hotel parking, which is on parcel one, and then the parking that is designed there on the separate parcels? And so we're not envisioning a whole lot of cross-traffic with people backing up into what will be the main thoroughfare for three drive-throughs?
Yeah, yeah. My, I think the way, what I'm seeing here is that the pads would, you know, the customers to each of those pads and drive-throughs would utilize the parking primarily, you know, almost entirely on those sites. And if, you know, maybe at a very high peak time period, you might have a few of the hotel parking along the aisleway used, but I think, like, all of these have been oriented as drive-through, and that'll be the primary, but, and the parking was, you know, provided kind of in that model.
And was it the city's request that these be drive-through, or was this the applicant's request that all be drive-through?
I'll have to let the applicant speak to that.
Okay. The final question I have here is with respect to the number of cars contemplated in these drive-throughs and the sort of, one of the things I read in the application was the motivating factor for putting these buildings here was to attract foot traffic, right? So we've expanded some walkways. We have also imagined that the hotel will help feed, no pun intended, feed these restaurants. So what are we doing with respect to connecting the hotel to these concepts with walkability? You know, I didn't look to me like, I saw the sidewalk, I saw the sidewalks on the perimeter, on the external perimeter, but I'm not really seeing what we're doing internally to make sure that there's safety for pedestrians from the first parcel access. Do we do anything, request any major improvements, anything along those lines?
Not that I'm aware of. We'll have to let the applicant speak towards that, but yes, as when you look at parcel two, parcel three, and parcel four, there is some pedestrian access between those parcels, but there was nothing identified for, unless the applicant would like to say otherwise regarding access from the hotel to these parcels.
At one point in time, I understand that an in-and-out was supposed, was contemplating going into this spot. I know that, or I've been informed that that is no longer the case. I don't know if that could potentially be an ongoing conversation, but anyone who's been to the in-and-out in kind of southern Escondido, over by the Target off of 78 and Valley Parkway, knows that accessing that in-and-out's drive-through at almost any time of day is impossible, right? Like, that traffic spills all the way back up, up that long road. Do we have any requirements here before recommending this resolution before the city council that, like, you know, we kind of control for that? Like, if an in-and-out comes in and says, great, that parcel four looks amazing, and they bring that level of traffic to this spot with two other drive-through concepts, feels to me like it could create a real challenging and potentially hazardous situation. So do we have any way to control all that?
So there, within the zoning code, there are specific requirements for drive-through uses under Article 16. As it pertains to stacking, there is no definitive, a number of cars that they need to stack for. However, what we've seen from previous experiences, that 20 to 22 tends to be the industry standard for drive-through uses such as coffee shops. I would imagine that if the applicant can speak more towards whether or not there would be a potential in-and-out on parcel four, it's my understanding that the applicant has executed agreements with Chipotle and Starbucks for those two buildings, and so the applicant can speak towards that, but in terms of requiring a modification to the conditional use permit for parcel four, in theory, if that were to occur, there are conditions of approval that could potentially allow the Director of Development Services to reevaluate that use.
And one final question, and I appreciate your help with this, thank you. If we didn't have a drive-through concept in parcel four, if we imagined something more of a drive-up concept, would there have been enough room for the applicant to be able to meet the required 11 or whatever 20 spaces, excuse me, moving those nine spaces from compact to full size and then adding an additional two?
So there are general standard conditions of approval regarding minor modifications to an approved plan set or approved set of, I guess, approved documents. So we would have to reconsider that and look at it. The CUP process does allow for reductions in parking, reduction in parking spaces, but we would have to analyze the extent of that modification.
Sure, okay. But just like back-of-the-envelope math, it's not clear. The square footage we're using for the drive-through, if that didn't exist, if we would have had enough room for the full 20?
Yeah, so I'll go ahead and jump in there. So without a proper site plan showing a proposal to that degree, staff do not analyze hypotheticals. So unfortunately, we don't know, based on what's been proposed, whether something, a design of that would pencil out.
No further questions.
I was going to follow up on Commissioner Stevie's remarks, just a minute. You go.
I was going, I had a question, too. Excuse me just a minute, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To my knowledge, there is no other place on Center City Parkway where this condition of the northbound CCP making a left over the traffic, is that correct?
You have, the Major Market Center has an opening as a signalized intersection.
Major Market.
Yeah, Major Market. Trader Joe's. But yeah, all others have been typically right in, right out.
Okay, got it. And then one other question that I had with regard to the deceleration lane. Is that a deceleration lane, northbound on CCP? Or, and you're going to take part of the median, is that what I'm seeing there? It's hard for me to tell.
What?
Which, whichever?
The turn from northbound CCP into the project.
The area?
Yes. Is that going to take part of the median or, that's a deceleration lane, I would assume, right?
Yes, that will be into what's currently median area, and it is a deceleration and stacking lane.
And how long is it? Do you know right up there?
I want to say it was about, I think it's 120 feet, but I don't know if that includes the curvature within the median.
Okay, thank you. That was my.
Do we have any questions? I want to follow up on Commissioner Stevie's questions about the market. And maybe I wasn't fully understanding one of the answers, but what is the mythology, what mythology do we use to determine the standards of a project having a minimum number of parking spaces?
So that's outlined in Article 39, which is the off-street parking requirements in the zoning code. For specific uses, it requires X amount of parking spaces. A drive-through that doesn't exceed a certain square footage threshold has a minimum of 20 spaces. Anything in excess of that square footage threshold requires additional parking spaces. But because these buildings don't meet that minimum square footage, then that square footage threshold, they are only required to provide 20 off-street parking spaces.
Parcel two and three have been able to meet the standard of 20 parking spaces.
That is correct.
Parcel four is larger than parcel three and is roughly the same size as parcel two, in fact, it's a little bit larger. How could the other two parcels, which are equal size or larger, are able to accommodate 20 conventional standard parking spaces, but parcel four is not? 20 conventional standard parking spaces, but parcel four is not?
We may have to defer to the applicant for that, that they could probably speak more to the size constraints. The compact spaces are, as I said, a site, a design feature of the site. It's, they still meet the intent of providing 20 off-street parking spaces, they're just not designed to your typical size. However, the applicant may be able to speak more towards the site constraints.
So presumably, my next two questions are probably gonna also be addressed by the applicant, but was it considered by staff? Whether, well first off, Commissioner Stevie mentioned if the, if the drive-through was eliminated, would there be 20? But what if the proposed building site, which the applicant still doesn't know who the tenant might be, what if that was reduced in size? Is there a possibility to accommodate the 20?
I think I want to just remind the commission that staff acts in a regulatory review capacity on applications. So we do not design projects for applicants. We receive submittals of proposals that have been designed typically by architects or engineering professionals, and we review them for standards against our Escondido municipal code. So in this case, it's hard for us to speak to hypotheticals, simply because we haven't reviewed that hypothetical. We would defer design questions and design constraints to the applicant's design team, who I believe is present tonight.
Do you have the same response to a question of whether, since we're being asked to exempt the applicant from having the standard of 24 such questions, instead of having nine or 11 compact, would you still have the same type of response when you show the court the applicant asked whether or not they could consider having instead of the 11 compact spaces, instead of having five or six full-size spaces, they'd still be under the 20, but are here to approve, have your request to have less than 20 of the standard, is that something staff would consider?
I will defer to the project planner on what they've considered, but I will interject with simply that there is a design review permit as part of this request, so Planning Commission can absolutely make recommendations on the design, including site layout to the applicant, or potentially continue or table the item back to staff to work on that design. That could be a component of a motion potentially.
You want to elaborate?
Can you repeat your, the end of your question?
Instead of proposing 11 standard parking spaces with nine compact spaces, has it been considered just to have a somewhat more, a number of less than 20 standard conventional or standard parking spaces, that's just 16 full parking spaces instead of 11 compact and nine standard?
So just understand, I understand correctly, you're asking if we had considered 16 standard spaces and essentially four compact spaces?
I'm not, I'm doing the math, it's a different head.
Yes. So as we understood when working with the applicant is that the compact spaces were essential due to size constraints when it comes to the requirements for the width of the drive-through aisles, not only for the parking spaces themselves, but the width, the required width for the drive-through lanes, the building size, and just landscaping and other requirements such as the trash enclosure. However, the applicant is present, so maybe they can speak a little more to the design constraints for the site.
I just would like to understand, with the compact size, are, a couple of things about that. One is, is the width of the compact the same as the standard, but the length shorter? That's my first question. My second question is, what kind of a car would be limited to fit in a compact versus not a compact?
I'm verifying the, the width for you right now.
I can jump in with that response, simply since I have a computer in front of me. They are the same width, eight and a half feet, it is a reduction in two feet in vertical distance length.
Do we know generally, I mean, is this like, hey, most cars can fit in this, we're talking about the big trucks and things like that, or what, what, what is the limit? I mean, what is, what is the realistic idea of how this would limit the car?
I'm just anecdotally, like a suburban, I believe is 18 feet long, which would, you know, that would fill a regular space, but I think many, and a compact space is 16 feet. And I think many other cars would be more in the, you know, 14 to 16 foot range. So I don't know what the makeup of our car population is, but just anecdotally, those are vehicle sizes.
So we could, fair, fair to say that most cars would get added to the compact spaces?
Yeah, I think that would be fair.
Any additional questions, staff? The applicant like to speak?
I'm Sally Schiffman, I'm with WSN Development Solutions, and I'm here to represent the applicant today. I just want to briefly introduce us, so we do have two representatives from the ownership entity, we have Neelish Patel and Rishi Patel. Neelish has been doing business in the San Diego region for about 20-plus years now. He owns and operates Patel, he's holding a family of commercial buildings, both here in California and elsewhere in the country. He purchased the quality in the site in 2017, 2017, and has been operating ever since. Patrick Cox is with JPC Properties, he's been acting as the Development Director for the last couple of years on this project. He's also been instrumental in negotiating with the tenant leases with the potential tenants. I'm Sally, we also have with us Joseph Skimming with Moore Group, he was the architect of this project, and then not with us, but important team members, we have Aaron Sweeney, who's our civil, Michael Schuler is our landscape architect and DAB, he has a lot of mapping and engineer. So the site, we're all familiar, in this picture, we have the hotel to the bottom of the picture, Mission along the left, and Center City Parkway to the north, or to the top of the picture. Essentially, the site has remained in this state for over 65 years. So the hotel went in in the late 50s, the restaurant went in the late 60s or early 60s, and has, and many different restaurants over the years. The tennis court, the swimming pool, and the open space area has always been associated with the hotel, and has been used in the past several years, but never fully developed out. And so here's what we envision with the site. Staff's done a great job of going through the details, but I will take a moment if you would like for me to answer some of the questions, or if you can get through the presentation and then go back. Okay, let me get through the presentation and then go back. So yes, we're looking at three drive-through restaurants. I do think it's important to point out that the, they're all slightly unique in as drive-throughs go. They propose Starbucks, which is to the north, to the left. It is their new business model, this is drive-through only. So this site will not have any customers going into the building, only employees will go into the building. We are still required by code to pair or to have 20 parking spaces on the site. So we meet that, it's unlikely that they were ever, ever gonna be used because everybody's gonna have to go through the drive-through. We do have extra queuing in this one, I think two extra car lengths to accommodate that extra drive-through space. Starbucks will primarily be in its peak use in lines. Then we go to Chipotle, the center parcel. Chipotle's business model is pick-up, drive-through only. So you don't order your food in the drive-through, that order would already have gone through, through your phone or app, and those vehicles will simply be driving through picking up their food and moving on from the property. Chipotle does still have an inside dining and ordering aspect, and so 20 parking spaces are there, and we would anticipate those are used. Parcel four, we do not have anybody signed on in a lease yet, however, we are anticipating a fairly new franchise to California, which is a prepared salad type of place. And so while there is a drive-through aspect and parking spaces, this will be a very quick pickup, you basically just say, I want the Cobb salad, and basically, yeah, it's ready to go. Next slide, please. We analyze a lot of potential benefits of this project, so certainly it works out for the owner of the site, but it also provides a lot of benefits to the city. First and foremost, we do understand the responsibility that we have to revitalize this quarter, so it is, to your point, Commissioner Stevie, that it is a very prominent area of Escondido, you have cars coming on with the 78, along Southbound, Mission is still a major, Center City is still a major, we took that responsibility seriously when we designed out further the site, as well as the proposed buildings. So we took a lot of care in working with staff on landscaping requirements, on roadway improvements, sidewalk that's gonna be going in, improvements to the pork chop there, Mission, Center City. So we did take that into consideration for the site. Additional benefits will be tax revenue. So we're anticipating, obviously with the split in the site, this is gonna increase property tax value, and the city does get a percentage of that. We also are looking at the sales tax from these three new businesses, we're looking at somewhere in the $10 million sales per year range, and the city gets a percent of that. And then with the revitalization of the site, we're looking at anywhere from 5% to 10% increase in occupancy for the hotel that's going to remain, and that increase in occupancy, of course, translates to TNT. So we are anticipating somewhere in the range of $250,000 each year coming into the city of Escondido through tax revenue from this property. These leases are not short-term, we're looking at anywhere from 12 to 20-year leases, the life of just that first lease cycle, we're looking at anywhere in the $3 to $4 million range of benefits to the city. Then of course, we have three new businesses. That combined with the increase in employment of the hotel to accommodate the new occupancy or increased occupancy, we're looking at over 50 or more part-time and full-time positions that would be created at the site. And then there's of course, we're a little extraordinary in development. So we have short-term benefits from construction, jobs and economic activity that results from that. And then we also have those new jobs that people have or additional income, and we would also anticipate that these jobs are taken by locals, so they would be hopefully using their money back in the community. And then we have the potential for still over economic activities, so this generates more people to this area of the city, and then they may also still up to the commercials on the other corner of Mission, Center City. Off-site improvements, so this, this image just really kind of demonstrates what we've been working on with the city. The blue indicates new lanes or redesigned lanes, we will be extending the right turn right through lane from eastbound Mission to southbound Center City. We will be creating that new right, dedicated right turn only lane into the site. We are proposing that left turn into the site across Center City to sort of the new driveway. Everything in green would be landscaping and public roadway, the orange is that new sidewalk that would be extended along Center City, and then the small pink area is the reconfiguration of the pork chop. And then I'm gonna just close out with, you know, the property owner is really motivated on this project, we've been working with staff for almost two years to get this through. He does not intend to sell the site, he's gonna retain ownership with lease agreements on the three buildings, and this is our timeline looking forward, so we hope to get approval this fall, this will be followed very quickly with demolition and site improvements. This spring, we're looking at finalizing that map and pulling construction permits, and we would hope to have interior improvements underway by next summer with occupancy in late summer of 2025. So there's a lot of motivation to get this done and done right. With that, I'm gonna close out my presentation, and I'm gonna go through answering hopefully your questions, and then if Joseph, if you have anything else, he's over there. I'm gonna answer them the way they came in. So, Commissioner Stevie, you had concern about the timing of that signal and kind of onsite circulation. We did, we did a very thorough job working with staff on the local mobility assessment. So we did look at Mission and Center City, we looked at Washington and Mission, Center City, we looked over at Escondido and Mission, Madison, we looked at, I think, eight different intersections in the area. There will be four different signals that will be, will need to have timing adjusted to accommodate circulation in the area. But what we found is that because of the proposed difference in, because we know who is anticipated to go into these sites, we also know that the traffic is gonna be generated at these different peak hours. We also did take a look at both weekday and weekend traffic, and so we made sure that we really cover our bases on what we have to make. It's equally as bad for development as it is for the city to have too much traffic, or to have those vehicles still up the site, so that's not the investment or something project by her, it's gonna be really good, work through that. Pedestrian circulation, anyone just wanted to keep that? So yes, the three new properties are all to standard for all pedestrian circulation, so there's sidewalks throughout, there's pedestrian paths, everything is ADA compliant. We also, as you can see, almost kind of just to the left of the new driveway, there is a connecting path from the hotel over to the parcel three, the Chipotle parcel. So in theory, people would, that's right next to the lobby entrance, and so in theory, people would know who's up halfway and go over to the proposed circulation system.
Can I ask a quick follow-up question there? I don't see an orange line going south of your proposed entrance. Is that a sidewalk there that's in white and it just wasn't highlighted in orange?
So we are required to provide the space for that sidewalk, should the city choose to have it installed in the future. We worked with staff a lot on that as well, as you're aware, directly south of the property line here, that portion of Center City, not only does it have to go into pitch, but there's no receivable redevelopment of the rest of that block. And just right off this line, it's that there's the dedicated right to Washington. So there's not a lot of space to continue the sidewalk, and we felt that it was, it could be considered irresponsible to put it into the outside of the wall. Commissioner Barber, you had some questions regarding the parcel four building, and why the other sites were able to accommodate the parking, and what we can do with the parking. So because we, through the process, we didn't have a tenant in mind yet, the site was really just on spec buildings, so that building is 2,500 square feet, which is larger than the other two buildings that are being proposed. And it's because 2,500 is pretty comfortable for any potential fast food restaurants that would be wanting in, but until you really secure that tenant, they all have their standard for what their building is being to modify. If we were to get, well, whoever we get here is gonna want to adjust the building to fit their needs, and we would go through the proper channels with staff to either come back in front of the commission with a new design, or we would be processing this system of authority to make sure that everything is in place. But that's why the building is larger than the others, we have the drive-through, we have different configuration on that site, there's also, of course, the standard requirements for the way the building needs to be facing the street, or for getting signage, etc. We did have a design where we had some parallel parking of full-size spaces rather than those compact spaces, but the, the problem is you end up, rather than having nine compact spaces, you end up with three full-size spaces that are parallel.
That number 16 that came off the top of my head, that's what, if you had, if you replaced the compact as?
Correct, so then we would have a total of?
13.
14 spaces, yeah. So there is a, there is a planter space in front of the compact spaces, so in theory, the cars will still have some hangover into that planter, but because the planter leaves only four feet instead of six feet, or two feet instead of? But because the planter is only four feet instead of six feet or two feet instead of four feet, it doesn't meet the standard for what counts as hangover. So what kind of stuff with these spaces that we have?
I'll give you a little more reassurance. My experience in other communities, why I am not fond of the compact spaces, is in other communities I've found the width greatly reduced. And now that I've learned that width is not going to be an issue here, I'm not as concerned as I was when I began asking those questions.
We also anticipate, as the tenant that we are in negotiations with is to go in here where they have these re-packaged channels, where they have really potential, we're not anticipating a whole parking lot at any given time.
My car will fit.
I believe that. Everything, did I miss something?
Commissioner Barber, I do have some more questions. All right. So my question is regarding parcel four. I'm very curious, why does the applicant want a third drive-through? It just, it feels like a lot. And I respect and hear what you're saying about the Starbucks having its peak hours. I must always go at peak hours. I'm very unlucky. They seem to be busy all the time. And Chipotle, you know, not having an actual drive-up concept, it's app-based, so it won't be full. But it still does seem to be very car-focused. And some of these commissioners might find it ironic that I am actually pushing against the car focus, as I'm normally the guy who's asking about parking and all these other things and care a great deal about cars. But in this case, it does feel like maybe just a more sit-down establishment would be very appropriate, given the hotel that's proximate. And given that hopefully, you know, from what I understand, kind of the city's long-term plan is that we be building more residential property, kind of up and down Center City, multi-unit, kind of like what you see off of Washington and Center City, right? Those, call it, you know, kind of middle home, middle-style homes, right? The missing middle. And so thinking long-term here, what is the reason for a third drive-through as opposed to a sit-down, more pedestrian-friendly sort of place?
So I'm going to ask that Patrick Cox can come up and answer that.
Great.
I didn't sign in. My name is Patrick Cox. Sally, thank you for interviewing me in this recap development for five years. And of course, thank you, Chairman Barber. Thank you, Veronica. And I then for the work that we've done over the last three and a half years. We started this project within a half year. Unfortunately, before you were here, that project, they terminated the agreement and left us time dry. It wasn't a pleasant feeling. And so we had a reboot. The reboot of this project is, I have to thank Yuzi Marushi. We couldn't bring a project of this nature without the cooperation of the adjacent landowner, which is the same landowner. That has to work with this narrow-stripped land. You can't plan for this narrow-stripped land. And we've optimized this land in order for it to work because of the reciprocal nature of the ownership that is the same owner out front. And only, only with his vision and line of need to work with the team and the marketplace can we put this project together. There's just no other way. And the reciprocal drive that you pointed out too, where the, where the hotel parks on, these, these lots, these individual lots, two, three, and four, all self-part. With regard to parcel four, it's the nature of the marketplace. This is responsible to all quick-service restaurants. And it's, and it's evolved related to COVID. And they're not turning back. It's a 30% revenue slide for having drive-throughs in restaurants. So these small-scale restaurants demand drive-throughs. There's just no ifs, ands, or buts. And you can even see that they have the double drive-through for the human because of that 30% increase in revenue as it relates to what you would think would be a conditional happen. And our exposure in this business is to construct a project that has close to eight zeros to it. And we cannot risk bringing in a retailer that doesn't have the credit that's going to be there for a long term. So as Sally mentioned, our terms are 10, 15, 20 years. And in order for us to finance and construct this project, we have to work with retailers that can sustain economic, climate, pandemics to survive. And that's what this project is responsible to. Parcel four, I would like to be able to announce that we inked the deal, but we're not quite there. We hope that it is in substantial conformance, which the plan is, as it stands today, substantial conformance with what we, which is, which is in concept on this plan, might be a little slower. But we hope to make that announcement prior to the city council hearing here on November 12th. We're working hard. It's not, it's not easy doing these leasing assignments. You can't, you can't just put up a sign and say available. It takes a lot upon the relationships I've built in Starbucks so they know me. I've got five Chipotles, they know me. And then this new retailer is one, must've emerged in San Diego County. And we are underwriting it as we speak. And this design speaks to today's environment and the future.
May I ask some follow-up? I don't want to interrupt, but...
Yes.
Okay. So thank you for that. That's very helpful. As a business owner myself, I appreciate what you guys are doing. So one of the concerns I had when I saw that you were putting in a Chipotle and a Starbucks was that I'm concerned that Escondido is losing any kind of its essential character, right? Like where all these cities in North County are becoming Generica, United States of Generica, right? Your explanation of the math, that basically you need Chipotle-level financing to pencil out these projects makes sense to me. But I do wonder then, if this is the case, that you have to have these kind of high-level players who are our, like, who can occupy these kinds of spaces but for the same three places that we have everywhere? Like what would draw somebody to Escondido for maybe a more unique dining experience in a concept like this?
I wish I could say that we could have an experience that is, you know, chef-driven, craft cocktail. But it doesn't, it doesn't exist in today's format, other than repurposing a space that's failed. And someone's willing to take a flyer on a startup, right? And that's usually second or third-generation properties where there is no options. And all of a sudden, you just found an emergent concept and it works. We have long-term leases and maybe in time where your kids are able to experience the next generation of this asset, it can change. But today, you, there's just so much risk in what we do. We work so hard with staff on, you know, public improvement outside of our property. We have to reduce the risk. I wish we could say that we can fund this 100% out of pocket, but we can't, so we have to build alone.
Right.
The loan is going to have constraints...
Yeah.
...right all across the board. And they won't allow us to put a mon in the building, even though they have their greatest concept. They're going to ask for us to build it 100% more.
That, that totally, totally tracks.
Right.
Maybe a Kava or something in the future would be nice, something a little different, but they might have the money. Is the Starbucks that's going in, is it going to replace the Starbucks off of Quince?
That Starbucks is cool. Yeah, that's the, that's the issue.
Yeah.
Yes, there's issues.
Okay. And is there anything, I didn't see this in the reports, but is there anything being done to mitigate those issues from tracking?
We actually, we actually do in Starbucks lease. So there, there will be portal, a porter and security. And that would be part of the, you know, overall tameness that's outlined in our, in our lease agreement and perhaps even in the CC and our document. So, and we, the good news is that we have a motel operator who's paying as much attention to that front area considering the line because they stand the benefit as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cox.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCarron has a question. In note of Commissioner Stevie's questions about the Generica portion, I do have a question regarding that. I would love, love for Escondido to have a Mendoza Farms, an Urban Plates, Lob Shop, something that's a little bit more elevated than just our standard Chipotle, Starbucks, et cetera. Not that I have a problem with those places, but why can't we have an Urban Plates? Every time I go to an Urban Plates, people actually are sitting down. The Tender Greens, people are sitting down in those. They're healthier options, they're a little bit more elevated, which we desperately need in this city. You know, so in, in light of that Generica, I do wish that we could pull those types of vendors in my head.
Commissioner McCarron, I hope, I hope we have a healthy option for you.
Okay?
I'm excited about that salad place, but that sign on parcel four is big enough to say Mendoza Farms?
Well, these retailers are very sophisticated and they're very difficult to land. And they have demographics and what they call Thompson studies and Moore studies. And they, they understand that their return on investment is based upon the demographics of, of the neighborhood. And if simply help the neighborhood upscales and the demographic of the buyer changes, then their risk profile changes. So our marketing efforts have been going on for three years. And we've hit Mendoza, we've hit Tender Greens, we've hit them all. They're not yet ready to land in Escondido. Here's what Escondido will benefit from this project, is when Starbucks is doing, you know, a thousand a foot and Chipotle's doing 2,000 a foot and the other guy's doing 1,500 a foot, which are huge numbers, that then will start cultivating other retailers so they all feed on themselves. And Center City Parkway should benefit as they start aggregating together. That's what happens. That's the, you know, retailers want to be by retailers. So you can say that this project will serve the opportunity for that higher-end experience that has a higher total value.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any additional questions to the advocate? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to address this project? Senior, I will close public discussion and open up for the other commissioners.
So I, I do want to hear from my fellow commissioners regarding this signal. I'm really, I'm hung up on it. And I'm hung up on it because I, I'm concerned that if we allow it here, that we might, we might instigate a pattern of allowing signals down Center City. And it's just such an important thoroughfare. I mean, it is really hard to get from north part of town anywhere south of Mission. Yeah, I mean, it takes, I make that drive every day. I use Center City all the time. I'm, I'm 10, 12 minutes just to get from, you know, north Broadway area into part of town. If I keep hitting traffic, like, I start making decisions to go into San Marcos. That's my next nearest point, right? And so I'm just going to put it out there, you know, that's, that's my concern. And then my secondary concern is I am concerned about safety. You know, I just think people are going to be trying to cross Mission at that current entrance to what used to be the FUB Place. And, you know, that's a, that's just a gnarly intersection many times of the day. If you're trying to make a, you know, a right out of there and then a left to head north, I, I am concerned that there's going to be, there's going to be accidents that, that occur as a result. But I'm curious to hear if any of you had those same reactions or thoughts when you read this proposal.
I, I appreciate your questions, your thoughtful questions and good ones. The way I look at it, if you're interested in our thoughts, is I guess I, my thinking is we have to defer to, your questions were good because we approached staff with those questions and did you think about this? The answer that I heard, if I understood it correctly, was yes, we did. We ran that analysis to the extent that we should have and were supposed to properly. And the results were telling, and if I, if I understand the results, yes, we looked at that and the impacts were mitigated. The impacts are mitigated, the impacts are adequate. I don't know what else I have to think about in terms of, you know, unless I have reason to have lower confidence in their, in their analysis, that seems to satisfy my concerns with those questions.
You know, I would agree with that. I think I have a very low confidence in the analysis myself. And I, I don't care much for the turn. That was the first thing that I saw that concerned me with the project. Other than that, I think it's a great project. But that turn across CCPs got me about traffic, seeing how it's going to work. Obviously, they can, you know, kind of time. But I've sat in on a lot of Caltrans meetings for traffic studies that have gone into, to the end of detail. And, I mean, they, they just make it come out the way they want. Sometimes to the point where they completely rely on the actual conditions that are apparent. So, you know, I don't know, I wasn't in there, I didn't read the traffic study, but I don't know.
I'll add to this. When I did go to the FUB Place that was there, I would always go north on Center City and I...
Was that anything good?
It was so good.
Really?
Yes, it was so good and it was fun. And I miss it. But I always wished there was a turn. You know, I didn't fully think about how feasible that turn would be because you'd have to go up to Mission, make your left, and then risk your life to turn left into the parking lot. So from that perspective, I am comfortable with the signal, especially knowing that it's going to be synced with the one that's closest to it. Is it the most ideal situation? Definitely not. But I do think it will actually increase the safety of people going in to that driveway from Center City. You know, whether you have to stop, you know, if you're making a left on Mission on the Center City, I mean, that's just traffic.
Were there, were there any other alternatives considered as far as, could we add that? It's a difficult place to get to and out of, no, I don't have any answers.
I don't know, one question?
I would just say when, you know, when they arrived with, originally with In-N-Out and needed a left turn in, you know, right turn in, right turn out has been, for the most part, what we've seen and entertained and allowed. So a left turn in was, you know, was new. And we were skeptical. And I think we, we did put them through the paces to, to show us how this works. And, and so I feel confident that the analysis that was done is, is good. And, and you really need that access, like they were saying. It's a very narrow parcel. Mission backs up, you know, most of the days, particularly the afternoons, what, you know, eastbound. You're not, you know, getting, getting out even a, you know, a right. You wait for somebody who's polite to give you a right. You wait for somebody who's polite to give you a right, but then to think you're going to also get a left, um, is, is, you know, your lucky day. So this provides, um, you know, a safe and a very realistic In-N-Out to this corner and is going to allow for the redevelopment that I think we're seeing here.
I would agree with, you know, Commissioner McCarroll that it is the lesser of two views. People, I mean, there is a lot of, and it's-
Sorry, could I just, um, just remind commissioners to please speak into the microphone? You have to get your-
Sorry.
...face really close to it because otherwise the recording doesn't pick it up and we don't have a proper record of the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Steve, not to put you on the spot because you're very concerned about this, do you have a possible alternative in your mind that we may consider?
No.
Okay, I would be fair to ask. All right, and for me, I think the staff has made it clear to me that they see this as providing safety features that don't crumble. But, oh, I'll be supporting the project. And unless there's further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Recommend?
Recommend?
I will second that.
Voting has been opened. The vote is five zero to recommend approval to City Council.
We'll take a five-minute break to give the chairman time to get back to his seat.
This is a Chick-fil-A restaurant, um, drive-through, and we'll go ahead and go with the staff's presentation.
Thank you, Chair.
Oh, excuse me, hold on. Any disclosures? All right, saying none, what, sorry.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Greg Mattson with the Planning Division. I'm representing this project tonight. The applicant four G Development and Consulting, representing Chick-fil-A Restaurants, has requested a specific plan amendment and a processing of condition use permit and a design review permit. Proposed project is a demolition of an existing nine thousand five hundred and fifty-eight square feet vacant sit-down restaurant building with associated site improvements and to construct and operate a three thousand one hundred and twenty-four square foot drive-through restaurant. The one point four acre project site is located in the intersection of West Thirteenth Avenue and South Pine Street slash City Center Parkway. Proposed project is surrounded by urban development built over the years, such as to the north of the project is Sprouts Farmer's Market, to the east and north are commercial uses and the Mobile Home Park to the south and the Religious Facilitate to the west. And you can see on the screen, we have the existing structure there. It was originally a Greek calendar's, now it's an Italian restaurant. Both of those operations failed at this particular location and they tried to make a go of it during COVID and they pretty much did not make it. City's general plan designates the project as S P fifteen, which is within the city's south cit- central city specific plan. The specific plan district S P is the city zoning map, which is governed by the South Center specific plan with its goals and policies. And it dictates what we can do on land in this parcel. The specific plan amendment includes text changes, which has been part of your packet, to add new land use categories to allow eating establishments with a drive-through, um, restaurant within the South Center specific plan. The drive-through facilities are not allowed currently within specific plan, without a specific plan amendment. The specific plan amendment enables the view, the staff to review and consider and require, the required conditional use permit. A conditional use permit allows for the construction and operation of a new drive-through restaurant, site improvements, site amenities, and landscaping. Conditional approvals have been applied to this particular project. Staff design review approved the designs and landscape concepts and took in consideration the intent, the style, the color, materials, as well as the capability, compatibility, excuse me, of the surrounding land uses, design standards in the area, lighting, and pedestrian circulation. Here's a, a little bit of a sketch here about the, the Thirteenth Avenue Corner's district area. This project is situated in the Thirteenth Avenue District noted in red, with project access directly from West Thirteenth on the north side and South Pine Street onto the east. Carl's Jr., located in the southeast corner, is noted in purple outline, is an existing non-conforming drive-through business that was established prior to the adoption of the South Center City specific plan. The project site is located in the southwest corner noted in blue, those two parcels there, and has a site-specific restrictions for drive-through facilities only at this location, only in the southwest corner. Sprouts Farmer is located to the northwest of the corner, that makes up the, the, their pink area to the north. This site's represents the site plan for it. The applicant proposing three thousand one hundred and twenty-four foot restaurant with a unique outdoor dining option with a walk-up ordering area, no indoor seating. This is a unique situation where they're going to have outdoor seating only and walk-up where you'll be able to get walk-up or have your app built in there. Twenty parking spaces required by code, posing, the applicant's proposing fifty-six off-street parking spaces, which includes ten E V spaces and also ten bicycle parking, ten of them are, um, actual parking spaces and we have two for long-term storage. The dual-drive loan lanes, which has a capacity up to forty-one cars, the dual lane, basically twenty, twenty cars each. Way the site is the orientation, so you can come into the site off of Thirteenth Avenue and the queuing up for the drive-through is internal to the project site. So there's really going to be very limited, if at all, no queuing onto your South Pine Street or West Thirteenth. The applicants are proposing a contemporary design with a variety of architectural features. A smaller filled building footprint, a one-story restaurant, is surrounded by buildings which are of larger height and massing. The applicant's proposing a mixture of wood siding, dark browns, aluminum canopies, painted stucco with varying colors, and various wall textures as well. The articulation of the building, along with incorporating lattice work, landscape, will avoid flat surfaces throughout the elevation. So there's articulation coming in and out and also height variation. The twenty-two foot height is the highest point of the structure and all the H B C and everything will be screened from public view. The lower portion of this illustrates the overall site design looking along South Pine Street. So you've got a little bird's eye view of what it looks like going to the northwest off of South Pine Street, looking towards Thirteenth Avenue. Here, there's illustrations, outdoor dining both for daytime and nighttime for reference. This shows the outdoor dining option, screen lattice work, covered areas, and pedestrian connections. You might note on the, both up above and below, where you see that half of the dining area is covered, the other ones with lattice and open air. This is a night and day difference, you can see the difference of the shadows. This illustrates dual aisle lanes with both daytime and nighttime references. This shows the screening wall in front, ordering canopy in the back, and screening lattice work and landscaping both in forefront and in the background. This is the drive-through along South Pine Street, looking south, southwest. This is the conceptual landscape plan that complies with the city's landscape ordinances. The applicant's proposing native and drought-tolerant shrubs with a mixture of ground covers throughout, installation of thirty-five trees. Those trees are a mixture of holly oak, crepe myrtles, red bud, and zoculma trees, in replacement of five street trees. Those five street trees have not been identified yet, uh, those will be determined in the future. Bioplotration basins are two of them. There's one large one on, on the dry aisles and one in the, on the southwest corner, are planted with appropriate rushes and rye grasses to reduce off-site drainage, so retaining everything drainage through the bioplotration basins and then will be able to retain everything onsite. And the parking lot has a fair amount of shade trees, as you can see. Initial study was prepared and mitigation, mitigated neck deck with a series of technical reports to identify potential significant impacts. The draft I S M M D was circulated for public review for thirty days, August sixteenth through September sixteenth, and no comments were received from the public. Negation measures have been identified to reduce all potential impacts to less than significant. An M M R P has been prepared and is attached to your staff report. Based on the analysis of the staff report, staff recommends the planning commission adopt resolution twenty-four nineteen recommending that the city council approve the project and adopt the environmental documentation prepared for this project. The applicant is present and is present to answer any questions or comments. This concludes staff process and presentation, and we're available to answer any questions that Commissioner may have. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Questions of staff? Commissioner, Commissioner Jester?
Are the E V spaces required under the code or the parking article or?
I believe it's part of Title twenty-four, there's E V required spaces. We have ten now and there'll be a few more that'll be ready if, if needed in the future. And the applicant may have a little more information on that if he gets up for presentation purposes.
Okay. So this is going to be a dual, a dual drive-through?
It'll be a two-lane road.
Operation?
Two lanes.
And, and- They get an awful lot of traffic. I mean, we've got the one over there by Target. The way I see, the way that it's configured, and I'm not sure it could be configured any other way, you've got the two lanes, the drive-through lanes dumping right out at the entrance to, to the property off of Thirteenth Street. Is that correct?
No, they dump out internally to the site and then they'd have to make a right onto West Thirteenth Avenue, not directly onto it.
No, no, I, I know that, but they're, they're dumping into the entrance into the site.
There's two entrances off of Thirteenth Avenue. They'll, they'll be coming in and out at the same location, but also South Pine, there's another exit, the entrance on that side too. They can come in both ways.
If we could, real quick, could you pull that up on the screen?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So there's an entrance, there's an entrance right here off Thirteenth Avenue here, and there's one over here off of South Pine Street over here. So the entrance to the drive-through would be coming through here and into this dual lane right here.
Yeah, I think my, my concern was that-
Right here?
-as you go, yeah, as you go through the drive-through, you're coming out where everybody's trying to come in, I don't know. Certainly is a, a big, a big drive-through. How many cars in that, in that drive-through, do you know?
I have, I mentioned to everybody, it's forty-one could be stacked in those dual lanes. So that's, that's quite a bit of traffic during those lanes. But again, that's, that's maximum, that's maximum at a given time. I don't know if there would be forty-one there. It's just, it's just a way of showing the queuing was not going to be out into the flow out into the public.
Sure, no, no, I, I like that, yeah, it kind of wraps way around the property and comes, comes around.
Correct.
It's just that, and when you're getting your sandwich and you're ready to leave, there's people pouring in.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner McCarroll?
I have a question regarding the, um, the, the corner rendering that's enclosed in this package of the, this district, this intersection district. And it's, it's regarding the median. And- Yeah, so the, the packet that we have is, shows the conceptual plan for, like, the concept of the thirteen, Thirteenth District, whatever this is called.
Thirteenth Corner's District.
Thank you. And in that rendering, you know, it shows what future development could be. And the rendering that's attached shows the median being built out to include more pedestrian-friendly areas, et cetera. Is that just conceptual? That's not actually a plan that will happen in accordance with any development on these corners? Or do we, do we actually get that along with this?
So as a part of the project before you this evening, there is no proposal that includes that center median between Pine and- that center median between Pine and Center City. The rendering in the South Center City specific plan, I think, is intended to illustrate the vision of the specific planning area. I would defer to whether our assistant city engineer knows if there are any CIP projects that would tackle that type of median improvement.
Yeah, there are, there are none currently. But like you saw on the project, which actually fronts right on Center City Parkway and there is no, there kind of isn't this median. We are looking at, you know, additional mobility options, but Pine Street kind of provides that and the project has sidewalk along its frontage. But there is no current plan to develop these, kind of these, I guess you could call them medians. They're the historic separation between Pine Street, which was a frontage road, if you will, and Center City, which was Highway three ninety-five at the time, so. Yeah, but currently, no.
Any other questions?
I have questions, but for the applicant.
All right, at this point, I don't have any questions of staff. Oh, actually, I do have one question, excuse me. In the specific plan, it only identifies that southwest corner as allowing for drive-through facilities.
That is correct.
Is there a reason, because we've already got an existing Carl's Jr. on the other side on the southeast corner, why that would not be, why we're still keeping that as a, as an existing non-conforming use and not allowing for that southeast corner to allow for drive-through facilities?
Again, I think staff in the city is concerned about having a proliferation of drive-throughs, so we made a site specific for the southwest corner to identify these two parcels for the drive-through. Again, the intent of the southwest, the South Center City specific plan, most specifically the Thirteenth Corners District, is to be pedestrian orientation, to have facilities art and connectivity. And so we wanted to make sure that we didn't get too far down the field and did make it a blanket. Everything within Thirteenth Avenue District could do it through a conditional use permit. But this case, we locked it down a little bit to the southwest corner and having a conditional use permit for only those parcels. And then maintain the integrity a little bit about the south, the Thirteenth Avenue Corners District itself. So that's the primary status.
All right, understood. I was just kind of curious about the, the thought process on that. I don't have any more questions for staff, anybody? At this point, if we could have the applicant come up and feel free to do your presentation.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Ed Hale, H-A-L-E. I'm with Forge Development Consulting. And we, our firm does development consulting. Chick-fil-A, we have about a hundred and sixty stores in various stages of development in the western region. I point that only, only because I'm a resident here in the city of Escondido. I specifically took this project away from a project manager that was going to be assigned. I said, "That's my store. This is the store I'm going to show to my kids and my family too when we get it built." I'm really here to, first of all, just say thank you to Greg and Veronica and the rest of the development staff. It's been a rather smooth process to get us to this point and worked really hard to, to protect the various stakeholders here in Escondido. And as a resident, I'm proud of the fact that they're watching out for the city as a whole, right? And I think they've struck a real good balance between making sure that developers aren't coming in and, and taking advantage, but at the same time, they were facilitating and helping us come up with a sign that I think is really pretty. The Thirteenth Corner, Thirteenth Corners District is and have been a vision for pedestrian-oriented community area. We've designed our drive-through restaurant as an ode to that design. So you'll see, for example, the shielding that we're doing is to strike a balance between blocking the lights that are coming through the drive-through with still maintaining a significant amount of transparency from pedestrians into the publicly accessible areas of the restaurants. You can come in and you can see what's going on in there, day or night. The lattice work helps that. You'll see that we put a really nice enhanced pedestrian-oriented or pedestrian amenity out on Thirteenth Avenue. It's very welcoming for pedestrians. We know that a lot of the customers for this restaurant are going to come on pedestrians and bicycles from the community, both southwest and west of us. And so I think we've done a really good job of capturing the vision that was originally created in that specific plan document that you were referring to. That vision of people, you know, picnicking out in the middle of that little boulevard there. If they were to do that, we would be blending in very nicely with that activity. So as we move forward and this community becomes more pedestrian-oriented, we're going to pay and, and as much as a fast food restaurant with a drive-through could possibly. Other than that, I'm really just here to answer any questions you may have. I also have the name is Eric Baker. He's a principal development lead with Chick-fil-A. He's basically my boss. Basically, he can answer specific questions that I can't answer with regards to Chick-fil-A. And also Kristen Bode from Michael Baker International. Her team is the one that put together the CECLA document and mitigated Baker's declaration. She's here also to answer any questions you may have regarding American's.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Stevie?
Yeah, hi, thanks for being here. I want to start by saying, of course, that I enjoy Chick-fil-A as much as any right-thinking omnivore would. And so, you know, it's nice to have a Chick-fil-A. It'd be nicer if you were on the north end of town, but I'll save that gripe for another day or just put it in your brain, North Escondido. But I do have a question. You know, we just heard from Mr. Cox earlier stating that one of the reasons why drive-through concepts are necessary right now is because the cost of doing what you're doing is extensive. And what we're contemplating tonight is recommending to the city council that we take a very beautiful sit-down restaurant that failed as a result of a once-in-a-generation pandemic and tear it down and put in a drive-through. And so I am curious if you can speak to that, you know, the loss of that restaurant, why, why are we not trying to replace that restaurant with another sit-down concept?
Well, I'll just repeat, the concept is the business market going on right now. And there are properties that are sitting vacant and this is not the first time. I can think of a half a dozen projects that our team is working on right now where it's the same thing. You've got a building that was a sit-down restaurant, a beloved restaurant. I used to go to the Chee Chee's. That's the way you pronounce it, I can't remember how you pronounce it. That was one of my wife's, one of my favorite restaurants to go to, loved it there. And it was, it was quaint, it was nice. But those are not, they're not making money, they're failing. And they're failing because people are not spending the time and the money to go to those restaurants. I would not personally lay out all the blame on COVID. It's not, it's a, it's a general marketing, a market trend that we're seeing. People are going out to eat more and more than they ever have. The percentage of people spending money at a restaurant rather than cooking themselves is way, way up, especially the generation behind us. But they're not going to nice sit-down restaurants where the waiter is coming up and expecting a twenty percent tip. There's none. So, you know, the, this property is for sale or, you know, we're, we're the business partner, they're actually purchasing the property and then we're going to, they're going to leasehold or we'll be leased from them. And that's the market that's there.
Can I ask a couple more questions about the market? Yeah. And I, I recognize that this is, this is outside of the conditional use permit, but since you're an expert, I am curious. I, so I, I'm forty and I'm of that generation of people who prefers to cook at home because of all the reasons you've just stated. The exception is when, so my wife and I spent most of our married life living up in South Orange County. And we had, we had restaurants like Solagave or Tender Greens or Urban Plates or some of these nicer concept, not your, I don't want to name names because there are some great businesses here, but let's just say your big box restaurants, right? And I totally understand why people aren't going to the big box, but what, why, why are the, the higher-end restaurant owners and franchises not wanting to make an investment, especially in that part of Escondido, which is more affluent? In your estimation? I know I'm asking you not to speculate.
So I'm not a restaurant tourer. I'm a rent, I'm a land use development, I'm a land use guy, right? So I go by what the, our clients are telling me. And the answer is this is what they can, this is how they can make money, right? As a resident of the city of Escondido, I'm very excited about what's going on with Brandon Avenue and can't wait to go to it. When I go to dinner with my family and I want to go to a sit-down restaurant, I go find one down in Brandon.
Yeah, me too.
Because that's, it's made for sit-down restaurants, made for walking in and sitting down and, and that sort of thing. But if I'm in my car on my way through from work or school or whatever and I'm on South , South City Parkway, I'm going to really enjoy the ability to get in and out of everything to the closest Chick-fil-A.
Yeah. One final question. What do you anticipate the tax revenue to the city being, not only in terms of the improvement to the land, but also revenue from that Chick-fil-A sinking forty-four cars worth of sandwiches?
You know, I, we really struggle with making those kinds of promises. We need it, right? Chick-fil-A is one of the most popular restaurant chains in the country. We're one of the fastest growing in the country. You can, you can quickly Google online where our average sales per store is, you know, and whatever our city government did for that, you can, you know, socialize on that. But I really couldn't sit here and say, oh, we're going to sell seven million dollars and spend, wait for some money. I think that would be irresponsible for our society. But Chick-fil-A doesn't fail. We don't, our restaurants don't fail.
Yeah.
And, and they, they are, we're still popular. We are very excited about being part of the community. You know, I don't know if you know about our model for how franchises work, but our franchisees only own maybe two of the most stores. There are people who live in the community, who are known, we are known for investing heavily in, really participating in the community. This operator will operate this business and he will be a small business owner or he or she will be operating this restaurant, maybe one more, you know? And they're going to be giving everything they can to make sure that restaurant is successful. And of course, paying for the privilege.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're, I'll say it because you don't want to say it. You're the gold standard in franchising, right? So I'm aware. I've explored, I've explored it. But I am curious then, you have not assigned this fran, this specific restaurant to anyone yet. It's not the same individual who already owns the franchise off of Target and Valley Center?
No, so Jordan already has two stores. He's got the one.
It's capped.
Yeah, and, and the one in San Marcos. So, you know, we, we don't, there is a process that they go through for selecting, you know, the applicant. And as you know, you get thousands of applicants for only two hundred stores or so, you're right, you know, we have a premium, our choice. No, it hasn't been selected yet.
Are there Escondido applicants in consideration?
Yeah, always, there, you know, always. There's a, you know, a combination of selecting somebody local versus somebody who's been working with the company nationwide, moving around, helping open stores and they're ready for their store. If that's the case, they would move here, you know, to be a member of the community. They're, you know, I own here, Ken, and they don't already live here. But, yes, sometimes they are local people that are already here and they've got another business and they give her that to run a restaurant. Sometimes they live here from, you know, halfway across town.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? I've got one. And I appreciate everything that you've, all the information that you've given, it's very educational and, but my question is more on the design and the curiosity that I have. We've got two, two lanes that go all the way through to the final pickup window. How does that second outside lane actually work? Is that intended for somebody that's coming through, already ordered, grab their food and go? Or is there, or is it just to make sure that capacity is taken care of?
I love this question. Thank you for asking. So Chick-fil-A is very proud of leading in the fast food drive-through delivery process, okay? So what we have is not a window at the drive-through where they open the window and they reach through and hand the food out. It's a door. It opens. They walk out with the food and they will walk across the first lane out to the second lane and will walk up and down and will be able to hand deliver the food just like people do with the drive-through on both ends. It's, it's amazing to watch because you've got these young people out there that are running in and out and, and delivering food and so we can get three or four cars delivered at the same time, you know? And, and they can move on out. It's.
Quite, it's extremely efficient.
Yes, yeah, that's how we do it.
You know, and apologies, because I've been to Chick-fil-A, but I've always walked in, for whatever reason.
Well, you go into a Chick-fil-A and you're, it's a happy experience. You've got young people in there that are happy to be here and they love serving you and it really is their pleasure for certain, for certain, you know?
Perfect. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Do we have any speakers wishing to speak on the side?
None other than the providers.
Thank you. At this point, we'll close public testimony. Any discussion among the commissioners? Commissioner, or Vice Commissioner Barber?
I'm just going to get this off my chest. I, I just have to admit, I really do hate seeing this building with all of its character being torn down. I do hate losing it, but I think so, anyone who's been inside the restaurant, it's so well-designed, such a perfectly by-erfaced restaurant. I really wished I could see an Outback or a Black Bear Diner coming in. I agree with everything the commissioners have been said on the earlier project. No, no offense to Chick-fil-A, but I'm not here to be a business consultant or to redesign anything. I'm here to be a planning commissioner and go down the list to make sure there are any regulations. So I will be supporting the project. I just had to get that off my chest or I'm going to be able to sleep tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments? Let's go with Commissioner Jester.
Oh, I was going to. I was just going to second. Mr. Barber's? Not a sentiment. I, I feel that way and I know there are probably other commissioners that do as well. But the project is very, very, very well-planned in my opinion.
All right, Commissioner McCarroll?
From an architectural standpoint, I love it. It hits every note. As a designer, I can appreciate the thought that went into the architecture for sure. But I will just, you know, and again, nothing against Chick-fil-A, but I just want to say, I wish that we were thinking a little bit bigger for our city. To me, this is a fast food restaurant, another one that we're allowing to go in into a sit-down, you know, spot that was iconic for Escondido as a family-oriented place of, you know, enjoyment. I, I don't think it actually does anything for our city to have another fast food restaurant. I think we have enough. And I also don't agree with the concept that people don't go out. I go out to the coast, you know, every weekend to go out to dinner because they are, you know, have so many new sit-down restaurant concepts that are just higher-end and hitting it on every level for a foodie like me. I wish I could do that here in Escondido. And so, again, you know, I love the architecture. I do think that we don't need empty sitting buildings, but it's, I think that we can do better and I think we should do better for the city of Escondido and, and replace, you know, in a neighborhood spot, something that will actually be more conducive to healthier environments.
I'd buy more into the concept that there's no longer a demand for that type of restaurant if I am not frequently told there's a twenty-minute wait for me to be seated in the restaurant. So I, I still see there's a demand.
There's definitely a demand for restaurants. And again, I just worry for Escondido that we're allowing too much low-brow, you know, buildings and projects.
Commissioner Stevie?
Yeah, so the only thing I, I wanted to bring before this commission is with respect to, we have this designated area that we're, we have contemplated being a place of community gathering, right? So much so that we prohibited initially drive-through concepts. And now we're talking about bringing in a drive-through concept, albeit, like I said, the Harvard of franchises, right? It's a very good franchise. I've never been into a junky Chick-fil-A, ever. They're remarkable. So, again, this isn't about Chick-fil-A. This is about what do we as a, as a planning commission, as we go before the city council and give our vote on whether they should consider this, what are we doing to this one? one space, one of the very few we've actually thought about being a community gathering spot? Like, how tightly do we really want to hold on to that vision here?
I want to hold on to it very tightly. I think it's vital for our community, especially in the, you know, this particular district. You know, we have a neighborhood surrounding it, we've got a grocery store, which is amazing because there's no food desert there. But we have, you know, a Carl's Jr. on the other side. I mean, fast food does not improve a community. In many instances, it does not. So I think we've completely forgotten the vision of having, you know, pedestrian-friendly medians and elevated concepts to raise up that particular part of town.
Here's how I look at this. This location obviously has had restaurants in the past, going back, and I don't know it was before Marie Callender's, but Marie Callender's was there for many years. This particular restaurant made it go, added after Marie Callender's was no longer there. And it appears that there's no other restaurant willing to go in and take that risk at this particular location. The location for fast food belongs on these major corridors, I think, for the very reason that you want to get in, grab your food, and get out. I think the location and the design of this is good because it is very much pedestrian and bicycle-oriented. So I understand what my fellow Commissioners are saying about the sit-down restaurants. And I'll tell you, if I'm going to go to a sit-down restaurant, I'm going up and down Grand because that's where I want to go, and that's where I think that we should be promoting the sit-down restaurants, to have that experience where you go, you walk past other shops, and then you go in for a sit-down restaurant, you're taking that time, and you're walking by other shops. And I, and I think that that's where we should be promoting having a sit-down restaurant. So I'm fully in support of this location changing over to, like you said, the gold standard of, of a, of a fast food restaurant. So I'm going to support this. And if there's no other comments, I would like to, you're going to?
No, I was going to say something similar, but I don't.
With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-19. We have a second by Commissioner Jester, and I guess we can go with the vote.
Oh, and the Padres did win. Voting has been opened. Sorry. The vote is 5-1 to approve the recommendation.
All right. Thank you. Good luck moving forward with the project. We'll move on to current business. So any future agenda items by the Commission? I saw that we did get a, an email from the city planner that addressed one of the items, or a couple of items that were brought up at the last meeting, so that's much appreciated, so thank you. Any other oral accumulation, communications?
None provided, no.
Planning Commissioners report? Saying none, city planners report?
Yes, so the next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting is October 22nd. However, we do not have any items tentatively scheduled for that meeting. That doesn't mean that that meeting won't be held, there could still be some last-minute current business items added, but we will let the Commission know as soon as possible if that meeting ends up being canceled. So then after that, it would be November 12th. November 12th, we anticipate a general plan amendment request, zone change request for the conversion of existing office to residential use will be on that night. So we, please let me know if you will not be in attendance on November 12th. We also anticipate the bylaws going on November 12th, so don't get too excited. And then the second meeting in November is the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week, and I know at least one Commissioner will not be present, but the sooner you let me know whether you will be out of town, the sooner I can find out if we have quorum or not to cancel that meeting potentially. And then we will have one regularly scheduled meeting in December, which is the second Tuesday of December, I believe that's the 10th, where we anticipate items on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. On that Tuesday meeting of the week, Thanksgiving, chances are I will not be available for that.
I'm out as well.
So with that, we would be missing a quorum for the meeting, the second meeting in November, so that meeting will be canceled, and I will put that on the TFA.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the Planning Commission? With that, the meeting is adjourned.